I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans express times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there's a strong body of research that supports social tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems, it has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, I, Jerry Miller, Mayor of the city of Winona, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 2012 as Mental Health Month in the city of Winona, Minnesota. As mayor, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Winona to recommit our community to being increasingly aware and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Okay, then, the only thing I have after that is, driving around town, the parks look good, make sure, compliment the park people, and also, I noticed the streets are looking good, looks like the sweepers are out all the time, and things are cool this year. So, with that, Judy, you got anything?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, Monica Callarou, please.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Salyards.
Here.
Orzakowski.
Here.
White.
Here.
We are going to start this evening with item 5.5, the appointment of the city manager.
Okay. I have a statement to read. On April 5th, 2012, the city council held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of Judy Bowdway, interim city manager. In accordance with the governing law at this city council meeting, the city is required to summarize the conclusion of the evaluation of the performance of Ms. Bowdway reached by the city council at the April 5 closed meeting. Following are the conclusions. Ms. Bowdway did not request that such meeting be open to the public. As a result, the evaluation of Ms. Bowdway's performance took place in a closed meeting as required by the Minnesota Open Meeting Law and Minnesota Government Data Practices Act relating to personnel data. I will now provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the city council from the April 5 evaluation. Ms. Bowdway has met or exceeded expectations as interim city manager, and the council has been satisfied with her ability to step in on short notice to the position and to credibly handle numerous city issues, and thereby accomplish a smooth transition. Ms. Bowdway has extensive knowledge and experience, works very hard, and has a vast knowledge of the community and the city's operations. Ms. Bowdway is active in the community and works well with other city employees, the public, and businesses. Ms. Bowdway has demonstrated through her performance as interim city manager that she is a good fit for the city and community to fill the position of regular city manager. The city council will be considering this evening whether to appoint Judy Bowdway as city manager and enter into an employment agreement with Ms. Bowdway. So with that, 5.5, council, what is your wishes? Go ahead.
A move that we appoint Judith Arbowe a city manager and authorize the execution of an employment agreement.
Second to motion.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Craig, seconded by Councilwoman White, that we move forward and employ Judy as city manager and execute the employment agreement. Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Jerry, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Glad to have you on board.
Next, we will go to item 5.5.
No, no, no.
No, 5.3, the sand moratorium committee and study plan.
Okay, Judy, you want to...
Mark.
Mark, why don't you go through this plan? Or Carlos?
Judy, Mark. Thanks, guys.
All right, at the last moratorium meeting, the public hearing that we had, we discussed the formation of a committee to take a look at some of the issues surrounding frac sand operations in the city of Winona here, and item number 5.3 proposes that council consider establishing the planning commission as that committee to guide the review of the moratorium study process. That's primarily because the planning commission has already established in that role and has successfully worked through a number of other moratoriums in the past. The process is proposed to start with reviewing the general issues that were brought to light in a number of the public hearings in the last few months here, and then move to a site-by-site analysis of what's going on at each one of the sites within the city here. My intent is to meet with the site operators of each site right away and to start gathering information as the planning commission looks at the general issues, so that when the planning commission starts looking at each site-by-site and does a site-by-site analysis, that we can get a running start, and so that we can get as much information together as quickly as possible. The proposed study covers air permitting, water permitting, environmental review, traffic impacts, and road wear as part of the general issues that would be discussed in the next few months here, and then we would move on to site-by-site analysis. We take a look at each specific site and take a look at its history, how it was established as a frac sand operation, provide a narrative of the current operation so that everybody knows what's going on there right now, and also examining the state and local regulations that apply to each operation. It's proposed that the planning commission undertake this role, and we'll work with the planning commission at the regularly scheduled meetings. They have two meetings a month that are open to the public, and the planning department will work with them on an issue-by-issue basis. That's in front of you tonight. Should you choose the planning commission to serve as a committee, a motion would be appropriate.
I got a question, Carlos. Now, I notice sometimes in some of those meetings, they don't allow public, you know, comment in that. Will that be different for this?
The...
In other words, if people come, will they be able to speak, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda, and voice their issues and concerns?
The meetings are open to the public, so the public can attend any meeting, and then it's up to the chairperson, and that would be Craig Porter in this case, to call on somebody if somebody would like to speak and the commission would like to hear what they have to say. It's up to the commission, though, to ask the individual to speak. When a zoning amendment comes to the planning commission, which during the study process, it's expected that a number of zoning amendments or other amendments will be initiated, there will be a public hearing in front of the planning commission, a formal public hearing, and also a formal public hearing in front of the council as well.
Well, I would like to have it that when they're discussing this particular issue, that, and I don't know if we can do that or not, but that the chairman allow anybody who wants to speak on anything concerning that particular frac sand issue that they're talking about at that time, that they be allowed to express their, you know, their concerns or what they want to talk about, just, you know, on this particular issue.
Definitely, and that's what we'll be talking about at the next meeting if the council designates the planning commission, basically taking a look at how the process will operate, and also taking a look at what you have in front of you here, and if there's anything that needs to be added to it upfront.
Could this council make that a requirement of the planning commission?
You could definitely, yep.
Okay. Someone else?
I was gonna say, thank you for the work with this, and I agree with what the mayor brought up as well, and I think that's important to keep that open, so the flow's a little bit better. I agree with that. I was gonna say, just as well, you do have on here, which I appreciate, like, looking also at benchmarking Wisconsin cities, I've dealt with some of these issues as well. I know you mentioned, and Winona County as well, and then, you know, you mentioned Chippewa Falls, and I was able to, with the mayor and yourself and Judy, a few weeks ago, we did visit that sand processing plant in Chippewa Falls, so that was, you know, very helpful. I know you'll be sharing all that information as you go about doing that. That's all I have.
Al.
Carlos, when do you expect to have, I know you said in your agenda item, bimonthly reports to the council, which I think will be helpful, and they'll be public information. When do you expect to have a final report? What's the anticipated date for that?
The anticipated date for that would be sometime fall of this year, in late fall.
All right. You know, there's tremendous interest, obviously, in this topic, and the planning commission's agendas, meeting dates, I know I had an email from a constituent who was curious about how they find that information, where they find it. I assume that will be posted on the city's website, or it can be if it's not already?
Yep, all the information that is discussed at these meetings, the agendas and the minutes will be posted on the city's website under the planning commission.
Good, good. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? George? Yep. Debbie?
Sorry, one more question. Sorry, one more question. On the first page of item 2, and you said, again, that meeting with state agencies, I know I keep bringing this up like a broken record, and of course, I know the council will be aware of when those meetings happen as well as open to the public. Are we any closer to knowing when that's gonna happen?
We have, we have been talking with them, we have been working with them, but the coordination has taken a little bit longer than we thought.
Yeah.
Right now, they're coordinating their regulatory approaches, and we'd like to have them down as ASAP, but they want to make sure they're on the same page first, so.
I don't think they know exactly where they're at yet. Hopefully, they're working towards that. Okay, any other questions, or is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the study plan that's been presented before us with asking, requesting the planning commission to keep the flow of questions and information open with the, at their meetings, with the public.
Can you make that part of the motion?
That's what I just did.
Okay.
Does that address what...
Well, you have to...
Well, I'm open, I want to...
You have to include designating the planning commission...
Right, designating the planning commission to guide and review the moratorium study process and approve the study plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, move by Debbie, second by Jerry. Questions or comments?
It's gonna be a lot of work for the planning commission, obviously. They're gonna need some assistance, so it's not only at the meetings that people have input, but it's to accept their assistance if there are people that are, there's a lot of work just for the planning commission, and there's a lot of people that are very interested in assisting or being part of it. So, I think the, what your suggestion is, and what, in essence, what we're asking, is the planning commission is the appropriate vehicle to ramrod this thing with our assistance, staff's assistance, but certainly not in a vacuum. They've got all the assistance from everybody who is very interested in this process, so it includes not just talking at the meeting, but being involved throughout everything. So, please make sure that that gets across in the best possible way.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to make the planning commission the vehicle for the moratorium, and that everything is open? Any, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Jerry.
Item 5.2 is the proposed amendment to code section 33A-03H. This is regarding the rental housing code and temporary licenses.
Mark, is this yours?
In summarizing the staff analysis, back in 2009, the council adopted a temporary provision to the 30 percent rule, which allows citizens who have their homes listed for sale to rent them on a temporary basis for up to 12 months. That program was renewed in April of last year, and it's again coming up for renewal on April 20th of this year. The program itself has had limited interest in your agenda item. We did kind of cover those individuals who have taken advantage of it, and Carlos and I both receive calls now weekly, monthly, from individuals who are considering the concept, and for that reason, we are recommending that council consider adopting the ordinance that you have in your agenda package to renew the provision for another 12-month period only, and that would be option one in your agenda package. So that would be our recommendation tonight.
Move to adopt as recommended. Move by Jerry, is there a second by Deb? Questions or comments?
This is clear that it's option one.
Option one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt option one regarding the 30 percent rule? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now we can go with the Purple Heart thing.
Item 3.8, under the petition's request and communications, is a request to donate the Purple Heart monument and site work. In the military order, the Purple Heart, led by Chapter Commander Dick Landy, are here to present their proposal.
Okay.
Good evening, council and mayor. I think you got the literature I gave you about this project. We've been working on it for roughly about a year. The chapter in Winona Military Order of the Purple Heart's opened in 2009, where we started it. At that time, we had about 12 members. Now we're up to about 55, so we are growing, and one, one of our wishes was to have a monument in the city of Winona down at Lake Park. Really don't have a lot more to say about it, except for it's gonna be beautiful, and it's gonna take some time. We're hoping that we'll have everything completed by this fall. Is there any questions?
Questions or comments for... Okay, if not, I'll enter Jerry.
Move to approve their request.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jerry, seconded by Michelle or Debbie? Okay, questions or comments? Jerry?
This organization, as Mr. Landy pointed out, started in 2009, and the fact, how much they've grown and how much they're contributing, not only contributed before with their selfless service, but recently as an organization, it's fantastic. Veterans Park Association, just to make sure everybody knows, has been working in concert with these gentlemen, and this is gonna be a beautiful, beautiful project. It fits perfectly with everything that's going on down at that park, and I did remind Dick that one thing he should do, and you kind of forgot, you need to solicit funds from everybody here before you leave.
They're in the folder.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't forget that. Another thing I want to mention is we do have some applications. I'll leave these over by the door in May, and what this is, is to either purchase a brick for your fathers, your mothers, your sisters, your daughters, your cousins, grandfathers, for the Purple Heart monument, because the whole, the bricking you see in this drawing is gonna be for sale for the bricks, and like we've been doing in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And this has got a two-sided one on it, explains it all, so I'll leave it by the door, and anybody who wants it, it's got numbers on it for me and Senior Vice Dave Myers. So both of our names are on it, it's pretty easy, contact us, but we'll put that over by the door.
Dick, what's the price of a brick?
Brick right now will be $150.
$150, okay.
Yep, and they'll all be the same size.
Okay, thank you.
Standard brick. The project, when we started this, we thought it was gonna become a bigger project than we thought, and it did. And the cost is up to about, just over $120,000, which we will be soliciting funds in the next few months. The rock itself will come from India. It's blood rock, they call it. It's gonna be a beautiful stone.
Good. Debbie?
Yeah, thank you for this. It's a lot of work, a lot of effort, and very much appreciated. It's gonna be very lovely. Do you have a tentative timeline?
Yes, once we get it approved through council, and the vets have approved it, then we'll start soliciting funds, and I would like to be ordering the stone probably in the middle of May, once I find out, because it costs so much to get it ordered, it'll take about eight weeks to get here, and if it gets drawn out, we're, we're gonna build the park right away as soon as we get some funding. If the stone comes later, we can always mount it later after we build the park. We're gonna set it up with pilings and get it all ready to go.
Al.
Dick, and guys, thank you for your generous gift to our community. If you've got a few seconds, could you kind of briefly tell people what your group represents and what you guys did to be a member of that group? And, I mean, you've sacrificed in the past, and now you're providing this in the future, and I think that's great.
Oh, thank you. Somebody else like to come up and discuss that, or you want me to do it?
Not offer.
Thank you for doing it.
Well, the Purple Hearts have been around, it's the first medal ever given out. All of us here, we're all from Vietnam vets at the moment, and we got a lot of all different vets. We help any organization at all. If they're related to military, we will help them and their families, and we have done that. Our goal was to set a chapter in Winona, which we did, and from now on, what we're doing is we're doing presentations at universities, campus colleges, two-year colleges, VOTECs. We've done several of them at Winona State, we've done it at the high school, and we've done it at the middle school, and so we're available to do a presentation, it causes, doesn't cost anybody anything. The biggest thing is, we got expenses, so it'd be nice if they donated a little money for our time and efforts. Each man in here have been wounded, I got docs that are medics, I have, like, two of us, three of us are pointmen, most of us are airborne. We were in the fighting units in Vietnam in 19, most of us were over there in '67, '68, and '69, when it was pretty hot. But we enjoy helping, and one thing we want to see, and we're making it very clear, we don't want to see the vets coming back now be treated the way we were. So they got some pretty big allies helping us, we're helping them out.
Thanks, triple fives.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the requests by the vets for the Purple Heart monument? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Jerry?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, we'll start at the top.
Under the Petition's Request and Communications, item 5.1, is a Winona Health Parade Request for June 12.
Move to approve that request.
Moved by Al, is there a second by Michelle? Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the parade for Winona Health? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Jerry?
Item 3.2 is the street closure request by Awakening Coffee House for Saturday, June 9th. This would be Baker Street from Fifth South to the middle of the block.
Is there a motion? Move for, move by Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jerry. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the street closure request by Awakening Coffee House. It's kind of a neat name. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Well, go ahead. Aye.
Aye.
I will say that this is a really interesting group, and what they're doing is really good, and just wish them the best of luck.
Right.
It's gonna be a lot different from what that place used to be.
Item 3.3 is the street closure request by Z Studio Dance Fitness for Friday, June 22nd. The street would be Liberty between Second and Third. Move to approve?
Moved by Michelle.
Debbie.
Debbie, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any questions? All in favor of the street closure for Z's Studio Dance? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Item 3.4 is a sign request from the Winona Farmers Market.
Move to approve.
Moved by Jerry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle.
Second by Michelle. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the signed request for the farmer's market? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Item 3.5 is the Winona Post Office Food Drive Sign Request for Central Park from May 5th through the 12th.
Move to approve that request.
Moved by Al, seconded by Michelle. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the post office food drive sign? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Jerry?
Item 3.6 is the Audio Designs Noise Variance Request for May 26th and August 25th at the Winona Mall. Move to approve?
Moved by Debbie, is there a second? Second by Michelle. Questions?
Questions, comments? Last year, when they held this event, I did have calls from some of the neighbors in the Johnstone addition regarding the noise, and I had a conversation with the owner of Audio Designs, who is going to take some steps to hopefully minimize at least a little bit some of the impact of the base, base frequencies that are generated by these vehicles. It may not take care of everything, but this is a one-day event, twice this year, on the May 26th and August 25th, so it hopefully will be tolerable for those hours. It brings a lot of different folks to our community, the competition is pretty strict, or pretty exciting, I guess, and very loud, and it's, it's a good event for our community, but we'll see if that noise, those noise issues are still here by this time.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request of Audio Designs? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Item 3.7 is a Peer Support Network Request to Use a Sidewalk for a Garage Sale on May 4th and 5th.
Moved by Michelle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Debbie. Questions or comments? Now, are they gonna, you know, 1:22 a second?
It's next to Sammy's, and they will not use the entire sidewalk.
Okay, so people can still walk by. Okay. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the Peer Support Network Request to Use a Sidewalk? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Under New Business, item 5.1 is the Storm Sewer Construction Agreement between Winona State and the city of Winona.
You might want to point out that 3.9 was pulled. Who's, Ryan, I see you left something.
Some of you are probably aware, the Bellevue Street Storm Sewer does not drain, but we discovered why. It's collapsed under the football field, so this would replace that storm sewer around the football field. We won't have to dig up WSU's football field, and we'll get that storm sewer to drain off of Bellevue. So it's an agreement between WSU, since it's their property, and the city. WSU probably collapsed it, so they're gonna pay for it.
They're gonna pay for it? Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Jerry, is there a second? By Michelle, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the storm construction agreement between WSU and the city? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Next, we will go to item 5.4, the updated status of the proposed dog park. Maynard Johnson is here.
Maynard? Where are we at?
We're roughing it.
Ruff, ruff.
I said we're roughing it, yeah.
Mayor and council, I was asked by Jerry, and Jerry actually, to give a kind of update of where we're at with the status of the dog park. Way back when, we kind of started this project before the mitigation of the dredging and things like that, we had a committee ready to go and things like that, and thought we had a situation going, and we had to use that same property for the mitigation area. But when we worked it out with, with the partners, with Judy and Community Development, we worked it out so that there would be an area that both could happen, and so the area that we had originally planned... And so the area that we had originally planned, uh, entered into the mitigation area, so we turned that sideways, and there was a four point eight-five acreage that we, uh, looked at to propose for a dog park. When they did that, they also utilized a lot of the pushing, the, the dirt and those types of things, and made that dog, proposed dog park area a little bit higher and things, and put a berm around. Brian actually was great enough to seed that area and things, um, so that's where we're at. At that time, it was taking a little bit longer because that mitigation took some, so the, the dog park committee kind of lost interest for a little bit because they thought we wouldn't have that area. So we, we tried to hook again to get going, and only a few people from that particular group came, and they put all, pretty much everything in there. With that, we've done a lot of different, we, we, the group went to different dog parks. We checked a lot of sites in town to see if there are any other areas, and that actually came up with, to be the best one. Others were pretty small, we looked at places like Harriet Island and the cities, we went to, uh, Burnsville, we went all over the place. And we got a lot of information, as I stated, from ROP, which is a organization that does dog parks and, and studies and helps people with dog parks. One of the big suggestions was not to have it too small, they suggested about five acres and not much smaller. Um, there's, there's dog parks in, in Ramsey County that are fifteen, twenty acres and more, um, in their big park systems. And if you look in there, there's, we, we, we have looked at, uh, additional, uh, items at the same. The Corps of Engineers and, and all of us took a look at it, US Fish and Wildlife, thought it was a great project. I actually just recently met, met with, uh, the US Fish and Wildlife with Mary, and they agreed. At first, they wanted, um, dog fencing or, or farm fencing, uh, now they agree they'll be a lot nicer with, with chain link fencing. So there's been thi, some things. Now, in there, you can't just put up a fence, there's a lot of things, if you look in there, that, that, that we still have to look at. Laws, uh, insurance, I actually talked with, with our city attorney, and the suggestion was that it, that it's a little bit better to have city run that particular park. It doesn't mean an organization can't help with things, but the insurance then would, would be covered better than doing through an association. So there's some things we've looked at that, we've, uh, there's a number of things in there that I, that I stressed in there that we've, we've looked at. We've had the street department come out there and take a look at, uh, an area that we could use and, and put some gravel in to put a parking area and things. One thing that's really nice about that particular area is that it's a, a little bit away from, from, um, any residential or those types of things. There's parking area, it's a big area, uh, to utilize, and it fits pretty well. We've looked at various other sites in the community, and it just doesn't seem to work. I could suggest some of those or, or answer those, we've looked at them. Other thing that I, that I just kind of found out, that, uh, because the ashbor, um, situation that's there, um, kind of threw a little wrinkle. And maybe we'll look at a different site there, um, but they, they've looked at different sites. And I, I know they've looked at some other sites that did not work for the ashbor to host their, uh, trees and then do some burning and things. They've looked at various places in town, and one of the places that I know that we have burned in the past, and that's even this year, is when we did some of the dyke ones, we did it at the airport. So maybe there is some options there, but I, I do not believe that, that both of those could exist in that particular property. Are we prepared to, to do anything right now with the dog park? No, but we're, we are looking at, there's various people that have expressed interest to be on the committee again. There's been a lot of, a lot of, um, use down at the, um, if you look in there, there, uh, on a given Sunday, from ten to eleven, they go down to kind of the, um, technical school area, the, the, um, middle school area, and there's been as many as forty-two dogs down there. There's a lot of people that express interest. We, there's been some work done, as you can see, on this particular area, and hopefully we could work something out so we could continue with this and maybe find a different burn site or whatever, or if we have to, then we look at something else. As you all know, Winona is pretty landlocked, and we've looked all over for different sites. But it's not easy to burn everywhere, it's not easy to, uh, have a dog park in everywhere, so, um, the rest of the information, I guess, is pretty much in there, but if any questions, I'll be happy to answer. So I'm hoping somehow we could maybe look at both, and I don't know what council, Judy's smiling, I don't know. We've talked about this at the staff level. I, I know the dog park really needs some things, but I know they need to put some things for the ashbor. Uh, the one hard part is that we kind of got delayed at one time, then we got delayed again, now we'll have to look at something else, maybe, so. Deb?
Thank you for that, I know, so, it's a lot of work. I'm curious about something, um, in the dog park, what happens if a dog gets injured in, in, in there? And what if they get injured by another dog?
There, well, for one, we talked about that, I called Winona Agency and things, we have a blanket policy as far as insurance, that way too. But what happens in there, there's all kinds of rules and regulations, there's, that's, as I stated in there, there's immunizations, there's, do we do those things? But there have been, there's aggressive dogs, and most of the time, um, the dog owners themselves are actually monitoring themselves, but there is some cases that happen like that. But it happened, it'll happen down at the middle school, it's gonna happen wherever.
Right, right, I was just kind of curious. So it sounds like your next step here, Maynard, is you're, you're gonna maybe try to get a committee together to flush this out more, because out, right now, there's nothing budgeted anyway.
Right.
And the city funds or anything, and to see what that is, and again, ferret out some more, what other areas as far as especially the burning for the Emerald Ashbor situation.
I per, I personally, but that's, I'm, I know both are important, but I know that particular site we had looked at as a proposed, that doesn't mean we can't switch, but we've done a lot of work on that, that area, so.
Al. Yeah, thanks, Maynard, for the update, appreciate that, uh, I, I support the idea of the dog park. The land that you've noted here, uh, a few years ago was used as a, um, site for dog trials with the Tri-State Hunting Dog Association, that's gonna date me, but, uh, there was a Quonset hut out there, and I remember going with my grandfather and his golden retrievers and going, participating in this, so I think it's an appropriate one. But also, I've had input from constituents who have said they would really appreciate having this kind of facility in the city.
One thing that's brought to my attention out there is if a, a first step would be if, you know, if that's gonna be placed, it's a chain link fence because they're afraid of the dogs running onto the parade and.
Well, there's also ponds that were made up there during the mitigation area, and some people don't want theirs to be there. If you look on there, there, I, I don't want to go too far, but, um, if you look, there's two different sites, there's a small dog area, and there's a double fence so that p, dogs that are in there, they won't get out. That's what we've looked at at different sites. Actually, I, I did get a price at, at what that, that fence would be from, from, from a particular person in town here. It'd be about fifteen thousand right there, just for the fence period itself, a five-foot fence, and that's not counting installation. And there's other things, as I've stated in there, that would do some cost. When you're talking first step, a lot of the information needs to get gathered in those particular. It's contrary to what people sometime think, let's just put a fence and let the dogs go in and let's have fun.
Okay, thanks, Maynard.
Next, we are at item seven point one, council concerns.
Hey, we'll, uh, start with Georgie.
Okay, thank you. Judy, good luck on your new position.
Thank you.
We'll be working together, and there's gonna be days when you and I are gonna get along, and there's gonna be days when we're probably not gonna get along. But, uh, the challenges, uh, for the job you take on and for all of us here at the council table, we'll be sharing them together, and the challenges will be many, so, good luck to you, and we'll, we'll make it happen, so. I have the confidence that you will be able to get, to get things done, so. In regards to the ash trees that we're talking about, uh, I know some people from the general public have asked, can they obtain this wood? As far as, you know, whoever can, you know, I don't need a direct answer tonight, but, you know, people have asked that they would be willing to take, of course, they don't want all the brush, that's understandable, but they'll take the solid, uh, portions of the ash trees and, you know, the, the strong branch arms and things, and how can they go about, you know, obtaining those, so. And, you know, if we get enough people, you know, how big of a burn area we're gonna need, I don't know. But if it's a possibility, I know a lot of people from the public, I'm quite certain, would be.
Well, I can answer part of that, there's gonna be a tremendous, there's a lot of limitations with that. The idea is that there's a quarantine, so if, I'm not even sure if we can allow somebody to take that wood, but if there would be, you can think about it, they can't transport it, they can't, there's, there's so many limitations to it. So it'd be good to get those answers out.
Okay.
But it's not like any other wood, I mean, it's, it's the reason we're taking them down, is to control the infestation, so.
Anyway, so, thank you, but we can, you know, however that goes from there. So Brian, could you just, uh, give us an update? I've had calls on the Highway forty-three construction of the turn lanes and bypass lanes, just give us an update where we're at with that.
Uh, after MNDOT looked at it for quite some time, they finally approved it, so shortly here, we'll be advertising for bids, and, uh, you'll see it on council probably a month from now.
Okay.
For a reward.
Okay.
MNDOT is paying for this, just so everybody knows.
Okay. It would have been done last year, but due to the fact of the,
Shutdown.
Shutdown, the, I was gonna say, strike shortened season, but, uh, the shutdown anyway, so. All right, thank you. And then just one more thing, too, uh, as people have noted, that have been coming down around County Road fifteen and seventeen, uh, the county roundabout project has kicked off today. Uh, it's gonna be a very, very big project, covering a lot of, uh, roadway as well, too. Uh, what we ask is that if you can, find a different way to avoid that area, it would be very much appreciated. Uh, the people from Waitoka and Nodine and Ridgeway, uh, as you come down, if you could possibly take, County Road fifteen, which brings you right to, you would turn by the Phillips Bus, Bus Company, take you right down to Highway sixty-one to avoid that. Uh, local traffic on County Road seventeen will be allowed, you'll be going through a residential area. We ask that you please be respectful as you drive through that area. No speeding, just be patient, and there could be some delays. And also, the people coming from Money Creek in Houston and all along the I ninety corridor up there, another possibility may be I ninety to forty-three will get you into Winona as well, too, or County Road twelve. And all you folks coming from those areas, you, you already know those roads, so be patient, it's gonna be going on all summer. So, uh, the least we can not bother that site, the faster that project will go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deb.
Just, um, congratulations to Judy, I know, I know we made the right choice.
Thank you.
Deb.
Yeah, same here, congratulations, and, uh, good choice, and I'm looking forward to working with you, as I'm sure all of us are, and, good things to come, more good things to come. Uh, just a, like, reminder, there's a Midwest Music Festival is this weekend, and again, Earth Day is this weekend, I know I mentioned it last week, it's this Saturday, I believe. And also, starting today, um, bicycles, canoes, standing paddle boards, and kayaks can be checked out again, uh, free of charge at the Lake Lodge, a wonderful, wonderful program that Park Rec has there. And I believe last year, approximately seventy-four hundred people used all of those great things for, um, getting out on the water, so it's a wonderful opportunity, and, uh, and bicycles as well. So if you haven't taken advantage of that, encourage folks to do that. Um, I also saw, I thought it was good that, um, the Parks and Rec received a five thousand dollar grant from the BK five K run for upgrades to our four point eight skate park at the East End Rec, so that's a good thing. A lot of folks still love using that, kids and, and young adults, I'll say, still like to do that, and adults like to use it as well. So that's a great opportunity for there. And last thing, uh, again, the city website, I think many thanks to Carlos, he's kind of, uh, overseer of bicycling that's happening. On the city's website, you can find, uh, an area of, I don't know how to get there now, twenty, but anyway, it's bicycling and biking and tourism, for example. Uh, what I wanted to share is that there's also initiative that's been going on, I've been, um, part of some of those committee meetings lately for the Mississippi River Trail, um, they call it ten states and one river, but Winona is included as one of those specific areas that they want to sign, make signage for. I know the Minnesota Department of Transportation, um, is a part of, of some of all that's happening with that, the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota, because they wanna call all these communities, and, uh, and we're working towards as Winona being a bicycle-friendly community. So they're doing great work, thanks Carlos and staff and everyone else, um, for participating in that piece as well.
You mentioned, uh, the skateboard park, and I think that was initiative of Cosm and Craig, if I'm not mistaken, and I think, uh, uh, Maynard, uh, played a big role in that, too, so, uh, kudos to both of you. Still going, and I think it's even getting bigger, I drove by it the other day and it looked bigger, so, that's good. Jerry?
Yeah, my son and a bunch of his buddies were really involved in it, uh, I can't remember all their names, but it was one of the Meyer gentlemen and his folks, and, uh, those guys are all in their late twenties, early thirties, they're still using it. Alls I got is, congrats, Judy.
And I share those congratulations and look forward to working with Judy. Um, and I want to thank, uh, city staff for their help in dealing with a, another smoky situation in the west end of town, and, uh, one of the Sunset additions, and I think we're on our way to working with that. Unfortunately, the weather is gonna get colder, so the situation might begin to, um, come up again. Also, you know, we, we had an agenda item, um, a request for the city to upgrade McConan, uh, road in the city, and that was pulled because, uh, my understanding is the staff needed to do more research on it. Uh, I know citizens in that area, um, are very concerned about that, and I would ask, uh, Judy, if you, you could tell us who the best person, um, to contact on staff, if those citizens had input on this proposed project, who would that be?
Citizens would, could certainly contact me in the manager's office, or Carlos in the planning office.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Al.
And to the consent agenda, there are five items, approval of the minutes from April second and April fifth, final adoption of an ordinance to amend the sensitive land ordinance, an ordinance to eliminate two-hour parking on a section of Hamilton Street, an ordinance to revise the alternate side parking, and a claim against the city by Kathleen Christensen.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Al.
Second.
Second by George. All those in favor of the consent, which is the minutes, three ordinances, and a claim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
Mr. Perry, move the adjourn.
Moved by Jerry, second by George, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, Jerry, thank you.